Oh my God, Ben calls too?
Ben was here. Ben was there.
Yeah. My brother taught me to go down to Myrtle Beach in April. We golfed a couple courses down there. I have never been.
The 6:37. And we call the first town meeting in the evening order. The first order of business is to elect the moderator. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to pick John Dillon.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Are there any?
I move to close nominations.
I'll say that.
Okay, all favor of nominating John Dillon as moderator. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. So move.
Good evening, everyone. I will now recall the meeting. I'd also ask the town clerk to record the return of notice with the minutes of this meeting. Legal notice for special town meeting Wednesday, June 26, 2024 at 6:30 p.m. Portland High School Media Center, 95th High Street, Portland, Connecticut, 06480. The electors and those persons eligible to vote in town meetings at the Town of Portland, Connecticut are hereby warned and notified that pursuant to Chapter 5, Section 503A of the Town Charter, a special town meeting will be held on June 26, 2024 at 6:30 p.m. in the Portland High School Media Center, 95th High Street, Portland, Connecticut for the following purposes. Item 1, to discuss the resolution. Subsection A, to appropriate $68 million for costs related to the renovation and expansion of Valley View Elementary School in a pre-K through grade five school. Subsection B, to finance said appropriation by issuing bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed $68 million. Subsection C, to authorize the first electman, deputy first electman, director of finance, or any two of them to determine the terms, conditions, and other details of the bonds or notes. Subsection D, to declare the town's intent to financing project so that the project costs may be temporarily advanced. To authorize the first electman, deputy first electman, director of finance, or any two of them entering to agreements dividing the town in connection with financing the project and determine that if necessary, financing of the project on a taxable basis is in the public interest. And subsection E, to authorize the first electman, deputy first electman, director of finance, or any two of them to apply for and accept or reject grants and aid for the project, and to authorize the first electman to execute agreements and other documents on behalf of the town for the project and the financing of the project. A copy of the complete resolution to be voted on is available for public inspection in the town clerk's office and on the town's website at wwwportlandconnecticut.org dated the 18th of June 2024. Attested Brian J. Curly for selectman. I'll call for discussion.
Next guy, a 5'3" white. I haven't said much. I've let other people talk about the school consolidation plan, but I want to make a couple of points. One is that a committee made up of citizens worked very hard to come up with a plan, and that plan resulted in a potential two-school closure only because of the way the votes went. The survey was done, and Charles and Lupe are Charles written, and Lupe are conducted stakeholder information sessions, and those were including many citizens who learned of the plan and what it would entail. Ryan was Ryan Curly's selectman, did a wonderful survey to again find out what people wanted. We've talked about this so many times, and we've talked about not just consolidation, but also improving our school buildings. I've sat on a building and grounds committee for the last five years, and by crisis, we managed to Band-Aid our crises. We fixed the things that are broken when they are broken, and we never get to the point to have enough capital funding to improve the schools on a holistic and on a bigger basis. This school consolidation plan will offer us the opportunity to let the people decide for themselves. I would just warn people that there's plenty of opinions out there, mine included, and I will not share mine after the plan is submitted to the state on June 30th. But I will share information, and that information is available on the town website. It's also available on the school website, on the Board of Ed website. And we should probably refrain from the negativity of why we shouldn't do this. Questions are good, democracy is messy. Get the right answers, get the facts, and then make your decision, and let the people in the town vote for the best plan possible. And that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Just state your name and address. I'm Richard Lawton. I live at 331 Cox Road in Portland. Been living there for almost my life. I went to Giller's leave and the Brownstone Junior High. My kids also went there. There's a couple of points I kind of wanted to cover, a couple main points. The first one, the first meeting that was held, they were showing outlines of schools and everything, the one that I went to anyway. And I thought there's a little bit of problem with the traffic control of the school itself, the parking. It seemed like there's, just going by there, it just seemed like it's limited parking at Valley View. And also, they talked about, and the way it works now, I believe, is the parents can come drop off or pick up through the rear, the rear drive. But if the schools are kind of separated and the younger kids are at the front of this towards the high street, I'm not sure how the traffic pattern would work, coming in, dropping off, or picking up. And the school buses also going to the same areas, or going through the school bus areas. And I know there's talk about, you know, schools are basically separated as far as, I don't know, where do they go to classes and all this, but they're still sharing cafeteria, still, I would assume they're sharing other aspects, gym, library. Those are some of the things I noted. I think as far as the proposal for, you know, one big school, I think the costs maybe are quite a bit more than what the, you know, the town anticipated. It just seems like that we can get, we can do things, make necessary repairs with the old schools in a much more efficient manner of, you know, paying for them. I think if you do the high school and everything, or I'm sorry, the big school, the Valley View, everything's got to be done at once. You got a lot of, a lot going on. It's hard to control certain aspects of contracts and things like that, I would think. I, I think that, you know, if they looked at, if Portland looked at one project at a time, say if, I don't know, the schools needed, and I don't know what they need, but if they need a new roof at one school, you know, that could be addressed one year. If it was a matter of heating and air conditioning for one of the schools, or maybe windows at the Brownstone, you know, they could look at those issues, you know, one at a time, you know, come up with a plan of what needs to be addressed and what we could work on as a town. And one thing further, I know our state senator Edelman, he made a big announcement that there were several, several schools in the area that were getting big grants, and it looked like it consisted of mostly HVAC. But I think he was, what was it, Bacon? I'm sorry, I don't have the specifics. I tried to go back into my email, and I couldn't find it. He was talking about Bacon Academy. I think they were getting $2 million for HVAC grant that was allotted to them, and I believe, I want to say it was East Hampton, that was getting close to $1 million in grants for similar type updates. So I just, I just think that's one area that, you know, that we could pursue as a town, and make it quite a bit more affordable. I'm just, I'm just thinking about taxes down the line that are going to be pretty substantial. That's, that's what I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anything else?
This is a letter we received by Ingrid Swanson Moss. Dear Board of Selectmen members, I understand that tonight is a BOE vote that considers propelling forward the process of school consolidation, initiating the grant proposals, and setting it towards a referendum. I am writing to voice my concern about this plan and my personal vote of non-support for the proceeding with the school consolidation plan at this time. To be transparent and in the spirit of cooperation, I agree with many elements of the school consolidation plan. I agree that we need to invest in our town's education system. I agree that we need to renovate our elementary schools, all of which are in states of disrepair. I agree that our students need improved facilities and better physical learning spaces. As a taxpayer, I am willing to shoulder a high portion of the increased taxes that will take to make improvements. I am not a vote of non-support because I am upset with the fiscal undertaking, and I hope that some of the momentum and energy towards improving our schools can be maintained and harnessed for a better plan. However, I am very opposed to consolidating all the schools into one giant elementary school. I have viewed the BOE meetings and presentations. I have attended forums to ask questions and share my perspective, and I will continue to be open, to be open to discussion at any time. I agree that I have a unique perspective as someone who grew up and was educated by Portland Public Schools, who then left town for several decades, and who has now returned with three elementary age students who are in Portland schools, entering kindergarten, second grade, third grade. My kids will be greatly impacted by this decision. Some of my main concerns and positions are bold and below. One, I support closing one elementary school and consolidating it into two schools. My preference would be pre-K through second school, a 3-5 school, Portland Middle School housing 6th through 8th, and PHS. The school consolidation plan means that Portland will end up with a giant elementary school, one of the largest around, which is, be specifically moved to Portland and out of class degree for our children to attend schools that were smaller, more intimate, less than hours. In our small Portland schools, our kids are known to staff. They are known by the teachers, by the janitors, by the nurse, by the secretaries, by administrators, sports staff, etc. The kids feel safe, they feel seen, they feel comfortable. These are things that improve their morale, their positivity about education, and their academic performance. In a school of 600 more kids, the familiarity and intimacy lost can never be replaced. I do not believe that the neighborhoods of grades adequately addresses this issue at all. The culture of small schools is very foundational, makes Portland schools so fantastic, and would be devastating to lose that. While I am not arguing that the physical structures don't matter, they do, they need major improvements, the culture, dynamic, and feel of our schools matters more. Three, similarity, I hate to see lots of administrators, nurses, special teachers, etc., with school consolidation plan, where the idea is to pay less by cutting those positions and consolidating fewer personnel to do the same job as many. I would rather pay more and have nurses who aren't maxed out on the numbers and overwhelmed and who actually know our kids. Same with administrators, it's a loss for students to try to max out student ratios in order to save some dollars. Four, I am concerned that a very extensive study was conducted over multiple years by a committee headed by Lupe, with focus groups, assessments, examinations of buildings, and community input, and comprehensive report was issued. Those recommendations to consolidate the two elementary schools have essentially been completely ignored. When I had asked why the response centers around the subsequent survey that was conducted, my concern about the survey is that many folks didn't have anywhere near the info the committee did, and misunderstood many questions on the survey. Also, we are tallying the majority position as our guide, when in actuality, the majority was only a majority of very slim number of votes, and if the options were to be two rather than three, for example, two elementary schools versus three, I believe that the result would be very different, because those voting for two or three elementary schools greatly outnumber those who want complete consolidation. Five, I tried to remain very open-minded about the architectural plans for the main school, but was disappointed by many aspects of that as well. A prime example is orange, and not just the gym, it will be a gymitory, because it will be a gym with a stage. One gym for 600 plus students, since I give our kids access to physical gymnasium space often enough, when presently our elementary kids get gym twice a week. Also, the town has already maxed out on gym space, where we have three elementary gyms. My third grade son couldn't get more basketball practice because there's no gym time as this. Our after-school program, rec basketball teams, indoor soccer teams, etc., will be detrimentally impacted by losing two gyms when we have one. Six, I am also concerned about how there is no plan for what will occur to the Giller's leave and Brownstone properties. Excuse me. I have viewed land use committee meetings and remain confused and concerned. As a resident whose home is less than 200 yards from Giller's leave, I want to know certainly what will occur to that property before I would ever vote to decommission it. If the solution is 200 more gardens, something that would forever change my neighborhood, greatly impact my property's value, and change the safety of our portion of nature, that will impact my vote. Likewise, Brownstone is an iconic building, and is found in its famous importance. So I am personally concerned about these things, but I also think that town residents as a whole need this information, and we are not going to get needed votes on the education improvements unless we have thoughtfully planned through collateral impacts and are able to offer those solutions. I don't want us to lose momentum for educational improvements, but I think we will lose votes for any plan without these appropriate collateral plans in place. These are just a few of my concerns, and while I know that I will have opportunity to place my official vote when things get to a referendum, I feel it important so I can represent us to understand the position of folks in town. That said, at this time, I urge you to reconsider pushing through the school consolidation plan in its present form and in such a rush that.
Thank you. End of the time.
Hi, I'm Sarah Spear at the PHS On Road in Portland, and as an individual, also serves on the Board of Education, I've communicated with all of you to lend my support to the consolidation of the school's plan, and for the primary reason, I was our first in our joint meeting, we discussed that we really owe it to our taxpayers that we represent to put this to their vote. So when we think about the survey, it gave us an indication of what the town might like, that was 1,500 people out of about 9,000 registered voters. We really ought to be sending this to a referendum, and I'm glad that we believe there is, so that we get the best support of the town for whatever we move forward with. So whatever plan we move forward with, we really need to do it with the town's support. We don't want to have a divide in town to the greatest extent possible if we are going to undertake something of this magnitude. As an individual who has two children in our elementary schools, I also wanted to extend my support for the consolidation, because every two years, our children move on to the next school. For a parent of a child who receives student support services like mine does, that creates extreme upheaval for our family, for the support staff, because there is not just one new teacher that she's going to be taking on, but a whole host of other providers that she has to change every two years and establish the record, and that trust is central to a student's ability to learn. So for that main reason, I mean, I can't even express to you the agony that we deal with as a family every time this comes up, and that's why I do believe we'll be voting as part of the consolidated school, but again, to add to the former point, I think we really owe it to the taxpayers to get their input on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comment? Do we have any online? Seeing no further discussion, the town meeting is adjourned until the referendum on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, being held from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the Portland Middle School, 93th High Street. Early voting will also be available at the Portland Town Hall, 33 East Main Street, starting on October 21st and ending on November 3rd. Absentee ballots will be available in the town clerk's office during regular business hours starting on August 4th, 2024. An amendment motion, Richard Leavere, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You can adjourn.
We're going to move to the hearing next, but you want to sign in for the second town meeting, if you want to vote, sign in.
Sign in. Nope, we're going to go right into our public hearing. We're going to get through this.
This is the evening without shared presentation.
No, next one. Is there? Is there? Am I good, do we have? Good evening, the time is 7:01 p.m. We're a little late for starting our next public hearing. We have a public hearing of the Board of Selectmen, followed by that we'll have the special town meeting. I'm going to read the legal notice for the public hearing this evening. So legal notice of public hearing, Board of Selectmen pursuant to Chapter 12, Section 1203.4 of the Portland Town Charter, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, June 26, 2024 at 6:50 p.m. in the Portland High School Media Center, 95th High Street, Portland, Connecticut. To obtain public comments and questions regarding the proposed supplemental appropriation in the amount of $360,000 for costs related to road improvements, public access also available through Zoom link A@PortlandCT.org. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves the supplemental appropriation line item 01-093-000-90012, transfer out capital, non-recurring town, in the amount of $360,000. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves funding for the supplemental appropriation in line item number 01-093-000-90012, transfer out capital, non-recurring town through an increase in estimated revenue in line item 01-000000000401, investment income of $250,000, and an increase in estimated revenue in line item number 01-000000011, property taxes prior years of $110,000. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves an increase in estimated revenues of number 0814100000501, transfers in general fund of $360,000, and an increase in supplemental appropriation to expenditure line item number 0814100089090, Public Works Highway Division's Vehicle Maintenance, Road Construction, Drainage. A copy of the complete resolution to be voted on is available for public inspection in the town clerk's office and on the town website at PortlandCT.org dated Portland CT, the 6th day of June 2024. Attest Ryan J. Curly for selectman. So we're going to open this up to public comment, and then following that, we'll have another special town meeting on this item. So I just want to explain it for those of you who may not, it's a little confusing. But what we're doing here is the town of Portland, in fiscal year 2024, had unanticipated revenues in interest income and property taxes from prior years. Those revenue line items were significantly higher than we had budgeted for. Because of that, we have $360,000 that we're looking to move into road repairs, and that would allow us to do things such as pave High Street, pave a portion of Spring Street, pave a portion of, what's off the Spring Street? Dogwood. Dogwood, and then Perry Avenue as well. So this would allow the town to complete some much-needed road repairs, and that would happen later this summer and also in the fall. So that's what we're doing here. We're just reallocating funds. There's nothing being taken from fund balance, it's just revenue came in higher than anticipated, and we want to use that to fix the roads. So that's what we're doing here. So with that, we can open up to public comment. Thanks, if anyone wants to say anything. So with that, we can open up to public comment. If anybody wants to say anything.
Sure.
Pick Watten. I live at 331 Cox Road. Lived here most of my life. Does that make sense? Just a kind of question out there. Does that make sense to do the High Street? Is there anticipating, you know, putting in a major building, school on a dollar view? Does that make sense to do that at the time? That's all I had.
I can answer that just because they're public. We asked our Public Works Director exactly that. And all of the infrastructure that would be needed for the school is already in place, so it would not, for what, Ryan's not here this evening, I told him he didn't have to be here. But he did talk to his board and confirm that it would not, the school facilities would not be impacted by the roads.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional public comment? There will be a second public comment on this at the special town meeting that will directly follow this as well. Anything in the chat? Okay, so at 7:07, seeing no further comment, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to our town clerk for the special town meeting.
Good evening. The time is now 7:08. I'll call the second town, special town meeting, leading the order. The first order of business is to elect the moderator. Are there nominations?
I nominate John Dillon.
They're second.
I move your closing nominations.
They're second.
I'll second.
All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And then all in favor of electing John Dillon as moderator, hereby say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So moved.
Thank you, Mike. I would like to read the call of the meeting, due to the record, as published in the River East News Bulletin on Friday, June 14th, 2024, and Friday, June 21st, 2024. I would also ask that the town clerk record the return of notice along with the minutes of this meeting. Legal notice of special town meeting, Wednesday, June 26th, 2024, at 6:55 p.m. Portland High School Media Center, 95 High Street, Portland, Connecticut, 06480. The electors of those persons eligible to vote in town meetings in the town of Portland, Connecticut, are hereby warned and notified that pursuant to Chapter 12, Section 12.03.4 of the Town Charter, a special town meeting will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, June 26th, 2024, at 6:55 p.m. in the Portland High School Media Center, 95 High Street, Portland, Connecticut, for the following. Item one, to approve a supplemental appropriation in line number 01-093-000-90012, transfer out cap non-recurring town of $360,000. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves a supplemental appropriation in line item number 01-093-000-90012, transfer out cap non-rec town in the amount of $360,000. Be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves funding for the supplemental appropriation in line item number 01-093-000-90012, transfer out cap non-recurring town through an increase in estimated revenue to line item number 01-00000000401, investment income of $250,000, and an increase in estimated revenue to line item number 01-0000000011, prop taxes prior year of $110,000. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves an increase in estimated revenues number 08-141-000-00501, transfer in general fund town of $360,000, and an increase in supplemental appropriation to expenditure line item number 08141-000-89090, Public Works Highway Division Vehicle Maintenance Road Construction Drainage. A copy of the complete resolution to be voted on is available for public inspection in the town clerk's office and on the town's website at wwwportlandct.org, dated the 18th day of June, 2024, Test Ryan J. Curly, First Selectman. I would now like to entertain a motion to introduce the resolution entitled Supplemental Appropriation Transfer Out Cap Non-Reck Town and Increase to Estimated Interest Income and Property Taxes Prior Year, and to waive the reading of the resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm out called for public discussion under resolution today. Seeing none, I'll adjourn the motion to move the question tonight.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Motion passes unanimously with 18 in favor, none opposed. Do I have a motion to close this meeting?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 7:12.
We're going to move right into our Board of Selectment meeting. This is our regular Board of Selectment meeting of the month. We did not meet last week because of Juneteenth. So this is regularly scheduled for the Selectment meeting. And with that, I am going to call the meetings are ordered at 7:14 p.m. The first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Who else needs my eyes?
I am one to be justified of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, I don't, there was a discussion of the agenda. Have the speakers changed to see?
I'd like to add an item to the agenda.
Yeah.
I spoke about this at our meeting last week. Um, I would like to, with discussion on this group, I'd like to submit a proposal for a motion for the First Selectmen to facilitate development of an informational financial summary document uh, to help the public understand financial issues of town in preparation for November. I have more details, we can, we'll look at that.
Perfect. Why don't we put that under new business? We'll put that as B under new business, and we'll call it, uh, First Selectment Informational Summary.
Yep.
Sound good? Sharon, you got that? Okay, perfect. So can I have a motion to set the agenda as amended?
I make a motion to set the agenda as amended.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension, motion carries.
Can I just say quickly, Sharon, I have it written up so you don't need to go crazy.
All right. So next up is approval of minutes from our regular meeting on June 5th. Is there a motion to?
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any errors, changes, omissions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension, motion carries. Next up is approval of our minutes from our special meeting on Juneteenth, 2024.
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you, Sean.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim. Any errors, changes, omissions? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries. All right, communications and correspondence. I do not believe I have anything to share this evening, so we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment? Anyone online? Okay, well, there's a second public comment later in the meeting. If you change your mind. It is our second meeting of the month, which means it is our regular update from the Committee on Solidarity. I don't, does anyone zoom for update? I think we may have been, we may have thrown off the Committee on Solidarity with our change in regular meeting date this month. So we may not have a, uh, an update from the Committee on Solidarity. So we'll wait for their July update, uh, next month. So with that, we'll move on to all business. I have one item on our non-union administrative pay plan, one revision that I'd like to bring forward for your consideration. And in conversations with our fire chief, it appears as though during the budget session, I know we had talked about, we talked about a lot of things during budget session. One of the things that we talked about was not funding new positions within the fire department this year. However, the chief pointed out to me that one change was made within the fire department, and that is, there is currently not an assistant, um, assistant chief. That is a, that is a stipend position within the fire department. That position is not, has not been filled, as you don't anticipate it being filled currently. Uh, so rather than have an assistant chief, a position of captain of training or training captain was created by the fire department this year. And so we wanted to add that to the pay plan with an annual stipend of $3,500. And really, this would take the place of the, um, assistant chief position, and this would make it captain.
Fire chief, what was that?
Since you have to be fire chief.
No, a little bit. Assistant chief. So the assistant chief position is unfilled, and so this would be as a captain of training position. And so just so you know, the captain of training oversees all three of our fire departments in town. So it's not, it's not just one, it's not just one fire department, it's all of them that they oversee. So since it's a global position, I thought that we should add that to the pay plan, and that's the only change.
So is this eliminating assistant chief?
Doesn't, it's just not filled. Assistant chief is not filled, and.
Do we ever have assistant positions in the same line?
Not, not without this board approving that.
Well, it, because it's going the same down.
It's similar, it's similar, similar rules. Actually, maybe one of our chief is here. Chief pointed your mind coming up and, uh, just, uh, answering Rob's question about this question.
Sure. Um, so right now, the assistant chief position is not filled. Um, the assistant chief is part of the command structure of the fire department. So in the absence of a chief officer, the chief or the deputy chief, the assistant will be able to step in and have command powers and roles in the fire department. The captain of training is essentially responsible for all the training for the entire department, for all of our OSHA regulations, NFPA stuff that we have trained, um, and our monthly, weekly, anything that involves training, he oversees for the entire department, not just the one company. Um, in the future, yes, there would be a possibility of there being assistant chief as well as captain, but that would come, you know, before the board, like Brian said, for approval. Um, the important thing I wanted to point out is that this isn't requiring any additional funding out of a budget. We'd be absorbing that in the current budget, and I've written numbers several times, and we have enough funding to be able to make that happen.
One question, Rob, wasn't, isn't the assistant chief part of his duties with the SOGs included in the training position? We always had the assistant chief, going back, my time, way back to Tootie, he was deemed assistant chief, and he was, his other, one of his, um, positions as assistant chief or duties was a training officer.
So what's the question?
So the question is, we actually do take, we're taking away the training officer away from the assistant chief, correct?
The captain of training is going to be responsible for all the training.
I don't, I understand, but the assistant chief, I'll tell today, or I can tell you made this change, part of his duties was training.
Prior to this, yes.
Prior to this. So are we leaving the stipend for the assistant chief the same as it was when he was doing, when he was taking care of being a, a line officer and a training captain or in charge of the training?
So the captain of training is not line officer position?
I understand that, Rob. My question is, are we paying the assistant chief the same amount of money we were paying him before when he was still doing an assistant chief position and in charge of training? Like our last assistant chief was, and the assistant chief before that, and the one before that?
Sorry, the question is, so by, I think what, what Sean's, yeah, so we're giving the captain of training, we're creating that position and taking duties away from the assistant chief. So Sean's question is, should the stipend for assistant chief, even though that's not filled now, should that be reduced to coordinate with the reduction in responsibilities? That's what it's, that's what it is.
I guess you can cross that bridge when that happens, if not being filled out. I didn't know we were discussing adding money to a position that wasn't funded.
We don't have, so I think to Sean's point, you know, I think that would be something that we could talk about when we go down that road of having an assistant chief. Rob, you foresee an assistant chief, I mean, we have a, just for, so everyone's aware, we have a chief, we have a deputy chief. Correct. So having an assistant chief has been that official in the past, but, um, we currently don't have one. Rob, do you anticipate that at any time in the near future?
Um, during this, correct, I just, no. Um, the due process that we had for trying to create the position, there was, um, no qualified candidates for the assistant chief position. And the training captain, there was plenty of candidates available, and due to the oral boards and interviews that we had, this was the best fit as far as being able to train the department.
That I agree with.
So.
I'm going to use the one I have questions, that's all.
Did we want, I mean, we could, the board could revise the assistant chief position now if it wanted to.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? My, my question is, as I'm looking to say, I did the math, and we're actually, the assistant chief was $5,428, this one's $3,500, we're saving $1,928 that we're not spending. My question was, if this document corresponds with any other accounting document for this fiscal year, this number's going to be different. And I don't know whether that's problematic. If, could you just take the $5,428 sal, annual salary, just take that out of this document for the assistant chief for this pay plan with asterisk next to it, just saying it's not filled this season, and leave the $3,500 below for captain of training?
I, I mean, we, we could remove this, you could remove the salary.
Just a flag of so that it's not, so it would be balanced.
I would, well, everything's balanced, and I just would say for the sake of being able to track the numbers, I think if we removed it, we're going to be, next time, as, as the chief says, if we do look to fill that assistant chief position down the road, I'm going to be looking at this pay plan and saying, why did we, why did we zero it out? Because it doesn't, it has no, it has no effect on anything.
I, it, I think it's the same question Bobby has, it's pretty simple, it's simple, asking a simple question. We have $5,428, is that what the last assistant chief was being paid? If that's the case, then the new assistant chief, when he gets hired, he should, there should be a, he shouldn't be getting the same amount of money, not the same gun.
If we had a new assistant chief, we shouldn't have a training captain.
If we had a new assistant chief, we shouldn't have a training captain.
So maybe we can...
You shouldn't have the same, just for the same money. Or you have three years.
Do you think maybe we could have this conversation when we have an assistant chief to talk about?
It's hard to negotiate when there's not even a position that we're trying to fill.
But that's not...
I mean, it's up to you guys. If you want to make a change, we can. I just...
The, the issue I have, it came to, it came to us and the board during budget session, so we're not adding any new positions. I have nothing against adding the training captain. The training captain that Rob appointed is a great asset to this department. My question is, that number there, we're going to have an assistant chief at some time. It might not be under Rob's tenure, it might not be under anybody here, but we shouldn't be paying somebody the same amount if they're not doing the full check. And somewhere along the line, we shouldn't show this. I think it should be up in this line item as a reduced number. Because what we're doing is we're adding thirty-five hundred dollars, we're leaving the assistant chief at fifty-four twenty-eight.
You, you can have both of them on paper, but you should never have both positions at the same time. Unless you hire an assistant chief that eliminates training.
Yeah, and I think for purposes of what we're doing tonight, if we've got a captain of training that's going to take on those roles, we're creating a way to appropriately compensate them. It doesn't prevent us to have a position that's on this payroll, a solicitor here, it's an available position. That's not funded, that's, that's not, um, filled, and is going to impact the budget. I don't see any reason to change it tonight. I, I almost think that if we want to look at how that would be impacted, um, getting a year with the captain of training and taking a look at it in the next budget cycle, we'll actually have time to have deliberations and talk about it, study what maybe if there are any changes, what they should be, versus trying to do it all in one night. But if the urgency is really warm, get this updated so we can compensate the captain of training.
Especially in this regard, that's our fact.
I understand, but it's just, we have discussions, we're having discussions, and we can't really do it like that. But it's just, that's got to be addressed, is all we're saying.
I think before we fill, yeah, I would agree. Um, uh...
I was going to say, would you like a motion to...
Well, you can move on to the special.
Totally, yeah.
Just, so, it is, is a, is a path forward? If someone is hired as captain of training, how easy is it for them to then advance to assistant chief?
You know, it depends on credentials, qualifications.
Right, and those credentials, qualifications. Um, is it a straight path from training officer to, you know, so involved? And does the town reimburse them for their, um, education to get there or to get certified?
Yeah, um, essentially, you know, all the training for, for the department, um, you know, assuming that you pass your classes, it is compensated for by the department.
And do you see that as a path that you feel comfortable with? If that happened, if you found someone good for the captain of training, would that be a path that you'd like to see happen? Uh, they would get...
So currently, right now, this was the path that was, was paid for us as far as people who were qualified and credentials that were, were available to us. Um, in the future, I have no problem going before the board and discussing, you know, exactly what we're talking about tonight. If, if the situation arose where we would need an assistant and a captain of training, we could discuss that, you know, at a later time, I have no issues. So, yeah.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to be approved. The, uh, the document, how to report the financials for the year 2024, 2025 pay plan, administrator, professional, executive, and licensed officials. Um, the revision one as presented tonight. I'll second that.
Any further discussion on this? Alright, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries again. So thank you, Jim. Alright, moving on, we have appointments and reappointments to board and commissions. Are there any? I don't think we have any presentations, something? Alright. So then we'll move on to item eight on the new business. Now, we have with us this evening, this is an update on the land and building research assessment committee. We, we have two members are here today, uh, Kristen Vertek, who's the chair, and Ken Woodward, who's another member. And I want to thank, before they get started, I just want to thank the two of them and the entire committee, the commission as well, because I don't think, when they agreed to join, uh, this little, you know, what do we do with brownstone, what do we do with Gilbert State Commission, they knew exactly what they were getting into. But I've been attending all their meetings, they're doing really, really thorough and great work on what happens if the referendum in November were to pass and we were to decommission two schools. What would those properties be? And so there's a presentation, uh, that is in your packets this evening. There's, uh, an extra copy on the table here, I may have some extra copies as well if, um, here, if you want to pass that down as well. So I'm going to turn over it. Kristen here.
Thank you, thank you. That is, um, so happy that Ken drives along with me. Um, yeah, so as I say, we met, um, we have to go to, um, the next page. We're going to talk about, um, our committee schedule.
Hold on one second. I just want to, can we get the presentation on the, on the screen so that, uh, as we go through the slides, those watching, those on YouTube will be able to view this? To do it, I think it's, I think we want everybody to be able to see it. Give us just one second here. While we get started, do you want to talk a little bit about the background? I guess it's probably a good point, or is it already? Okay, it's...
Sharon was next, her copy was...
Can you see what's on it?
The PowerPoint one?
I can't see it.
So, so before we start, I'll just throw in a couple of things. So, this is a draft update, this is not the final report. We're just giving you an update of where this is headed. And the goal of the committee, this commission was to put together suggestions for possibilities of the Gilbert State Elementary School in the, in the Brownstone. So I just want you to know this is not a final.
Okay, great, correct, thank you. Uh, so you put it in the next slide, so this is our agenda, um, you know, the contents of what we're, what we'd be sharing with you this evening. Um, let's talk briefly about our committee's schedule. Um, we have been meeting since February, we try to meet monthly. Um, and had to break up a couple of individual meetings, but we'll show you that in a second. Our next one is the goals and objectives that we've kind of set, um, for ourselves as a committee. Um, some of the resource connections and really the, the experts that we've reached out to in the industry to get some feedback. Um, and then the suggestion matrix, which we've defined, um, per schools, we'll go into that. And then the overall discussion points that were kind of the, the fluid document that we had throughout each of the meetings, um, that we'll talk to you about this evening. Let me go to the next slide, please. Uh, so as a mention, we, our first meeting was back in February twenty-seven, we tried to meet monthly. We did have some building tours along the way, with some of those experts that we had reached out to that are in the industry, whether they were developers, real estate agents, assessors. We did break those up, um, some in March, ones again in April, and then in May. So we did have a good assortment of folks, we did walk through both of the schools with us, getting their perspective. Um, most, uh, at least half of our committee was able to join, um, throughout those tours, I think that was helpful. As we got closer to tonight, we did, uh, throw in an extra meeting, um, just to make sure that we were prepping well enough for this evening and making sure that everybody in the committee, um, got to see the document that we, you know, we were playing with in that pool. We threw it and made the questions that is necessary. And so that's what we'll share with you this evening. So the next one, um, so some of the goals and objectives, um, and I don't, I don't mean to be annoying to read these all to you, but, um, to go through them was to better chart production and knowledge to explore potential new uses of the brownstone and Gilbert State properties, um, that will potentially be gate gated. Engage with local experts, including developers, commercial real estate professionals, and appraisers to gain valuable insight about the properties. And we'll go into a list that we created of all those connections that we dated and some that we heard back from and some that we hadn't, but we'll define that a little bit further in, um, a slide or two. Generate a diverse range of potential uses for the buildings, considering possibilities such as community centers, portable housing, residential options, and that could be condos, multifamily units, apartments, and office spaces. Assess how the current conditions of each property affect the feasibility of the proposed uses. Identify potential challenges for each proposed use and develop practical solutions. Consider the impact of future uses on the town, such as the loss of two gym spaces and its effect on community and the property rec programs. I think it was kind of shocking when we did have Amy come in and, and talk about how much they do use those gyms, all three of them, not only just for sports and athletics, but for the after, at the school programs. And the fact that we think two of them, I think was a part of the struggle for us. So that was one thing that was, you know, was relevant in our minds throughout the process and something that we wanted to take into consideration.
And as far as the first one, leveraging our collective knowledge, the, the, uh, committee was made up of, um, construction professionals like me. I'm a professional cost, construction cost consultant. Um, another gentleman who would have done the same thing as I do for a construction company. Um, a local builder, a real estate agent, and then, um, another, uh, board, uh, board, what, what do you, is that?
Yeah, building.
Come to you. So just, you know, there was, there was a decent amount of real collective knowledge. That's a great term, because all of us, oh, you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm a, I'm running environment planner, so I definitely focus on, on the planning aspect of it. So I added a different mix to the, to the group.
Yeah, so it was a great mess of different types of people that know about projects like this and what could happen, what makes sense, and so we just wanted to run that.
And you went to the next one, I think that feedbacks on this, so this was our list of folks that we reached out to. Um, you know, obviously, uh, kind of had a lot of connections in, in the developer industry, so he was able to get a lot of folks to come in. Not only did they tour the buildings with us, they also came in and spoke, um, during one of our meetings, allow us the opportunity to ask them, you know, any kind of questions. So you can see that we met with a commercial real estate broker, a couple of different developers. We, um, reached out to different, um, communities that might have been doing similar projects. And what did they do with their school, the Wilson Middle School right here in Middletown? Um, we reached out to different, uh, like, well, Whistling University, we reached out to the facility director there. Were they interested in ever kind of migrating across the river? Unfortunately, they were not, but I think even all the positive things, there were things that we did not get responses to, to come for. So I think that was helpful to understand who we contacted, who might still have an interest, what school they might be interested in, um, and giving us feedback that way, which I think was helpful. Um, we did, um, take into consideration, um, we did look from Oak Hill, um, Attlebrook. Um, we did look at, um, the sideline report, so that's, um, talked about here a little bit. Um, we even reached out to the town for Tower Town Nation, they do a lot of work with old hotels and schools where they come in and renovate them and make them housing for veterans. So I thought that was, you know, a different mix, that was something to take into consideration. Uh, Colliers with Commercial Real Estate, um, St. Clement's, and Norx Bob's, we all hear about. Um, there was a lot of public information that was just, you know, looking through Facebook and, you know, hearsay through the streets of Portland of the idea of hotels, is there anything that could be done with that? So we, that was one of the considerations and the ideas that we could have done, that we looked for um, throughout some of the meetings that we talked about.
So a couple of items there, Larry Dooley, who's a developer at Gold Hatingway in Hunter. So that's a major historic restoration and renovation. So it was critical that we asked somebody with his experience, you know, with, with what we have in Brownstone and, and obviously committing to Brownstone, you know, you know, what, you know, is, is somewhat historic, it's not registered, but, um, you know, get that kind of input on what, what his cup pick was and what he saw as, uh, potentials and, and that. And then, uh, like I said, the burgers, Chris Riley, um, not so much historic, but, um, thousands and thousands of units, um, charge multifamily, and, um, um, they have a product currently going on, that's the renovation of a little port house, which is multifamily. And so it was very guilty, it is to be back to. And then, um, Attlebrook, Rob's a good, he brought from not-for-profit. Um, this has classroom space and, and, um, learning type, uh, facility. And then the last developer we had in was, um, he was, yep. And he was a private developer. Yeah, so he had, he had a very different take than the two, uh, kind of commercial multifamily developers. Um, in his state was more possibly villagey. So it was a good mess of those, those four developers. And that having feedback from, um, the commercial real estate broker and, uh, pollators that I've talked with, um, was, was very, you know, valid and I'll give it to some of them, some of that. So the feedback on who these people are, what they do, all, all were great resources for us.
Go to the next slide. So we broke it down, uh, per school, and you'll see anything, and then we'll do that from a part of the copy. Um, the first category that we looked at, I feel it was being, was the potential of selling. You'll see anything designated in the green box to the left, it's all different, uh, things of selling properties. So the first one would be sell buildings to a developer. And then obviously, you know, for the developer to turn into single-family homes, condos, or multifamily apartments. And in the next category, in the next, um, column, we look at the pros and cons. These are obviously all from our perspective, but the pros for that would be removing the operating costs from the town budget. And another pro would be bringing in additional tax revenue to the town. Cons that we discussed were town loses the property ownership. And then, uh, another con, some property may take time and will need to continue to maintain and, and that duration. Um, the good thing that we discussed, that we do have time on our side right now, we do not need to sell them right now. We do need that potentially for swing space with the bigger projects. So I think that time is working for us at the current, um, at the current time.
So just one, one question says swing space, she, she, just so you know, she means swing space while the new schools are starting. You know, they're still give a space, they don't have to, you don't have to do something, they will give the still give a space. And the other important thing is, one, one of the cons we didn't this year, which we will, is the, uh, loss of the two gyms. And how to make up for that, with that correct, uh, party rec. See, that seemed to be pretty critical.
Uh, the next one would be sell building to a developer that would be interested in turning, um, Gilbert Sleep into a retirement nursing center. So similar pros and cons, you know, sell, um, we'd be able to remove the operating cost would be a pro, but bringing in additional revenue would also be a pro. The cons would be the town loses the property, some renovation upgrades may be required for the town to cover the cost of. And then some property may take time, we would actually have to maintain that in the duration of the sale. A, a third option for Gilbert Sleep would be sell the building to a developer who would be interested in constructing a new retirement. Um, so one previous was renovate, this one is to, um, construct a new retirement nursing center. So removing Gilbert Sleep and rebuilding. Same pros, you know, covering the operating costs, bringing in additional tax revenue. And then the cons, similar, town loses a property, we might have to be on, um, um, in charge of doing some upgrades to be able to sell it and then maintain that property all the way through to sell. Um, and then the other option would be to sell the building to a developer, but not for profit. So the pro would be remove the operating cost and then bring in additional tax revenue. The problem is, is a not-for-profit, we might not be able to bring in that tax revenue, so that might be a con that we want to consider. Um, and then the same cons as the previous ones. So as we look in the two, did we notice a sell?
Um, you know, we, we look into how lies do. So on, on the, on the sell, you know, the first one, we look at, um, you know, there, there was some discussion, just so you know, about, this is a large piece of property in Portland um, that is town-owned, and what is that valued to the town? And so we discussed that and all that over... And so we discussed that and all that over and, and understood it better. Because that discussion, that, that, that kind of makes a difference. And then we talked about, you know, single-family homes. This is where, you know, discussions with real estate brokers really came in handy. Because we found, you know, a single-family home, the site where it would take to build infrastructure on that 16-acre site. How much property would actually be homes and, and how much were not the homes, how many most were built? What's that worth? How much is the property worth? And then what's the cost of demolition because the building has that all, all put out? So, so we, and then we also took into the account if it was condos or, or apartments. Maybe through small buildings or maybe it was, you know, some other type of multifamily. Obviously, the more dense the property is with residents, the more profitability there is for the town. So if you have single-family homes and let's say maybe Portland has 16 single-family homes. That doesn't mean an acre a piece, it was about a half acre a piece. Fifty percent of the other half acre, because it's 16 acres, would, would go through the, the wetlands and the areas surrounding setbacks and stuff. You know, when you're 16 homes and you've had for a certain amount, and you have the building demolition, and you have second infrastructure. And fees for the builder, you know, it doesn't really pan out too. It's not worth much more than the existing building is. So it's almost a net zero. That is a hard pill to swallow for us. Because the saying, you know, here we have this property, the building has the demolishes as much as the property's worth. So that, as a bummer. But we did have some costs from the architecture firms that were down under the school project in the town. And we, we disputed the cost of their demolition of it. Okay, I have a feel for what their real cost would be. And even with those real costs, it really doesn't pay out. But that's why you get more units, you get more people there, it starts to pay out because that's what they want. That's not our call, it's just a suggestion, you know? So there's, there's a lot to these, you know, words online. But I, I think it's important that, you know, we, we thought a lot about the details and what the costs would be.
Okay, so then the next set are the two that are kind of orangey red, and that is for Portland to keep the property. So one of them, keep as the town property and repurpose and use. We had a lot of discussions of really, what does that mean? You know, that's when we talked with Hiller's Hill and any sort of, or like a crack, you know, that, that type of client that would want to add additional schools. And potentially use it as a classroom that they are, obviously there could still be some maintenance that would need to happen. Probably, you know, the check system and that thing. And so the pros for that would be, we keep the property to support the town needs. And, you know, is there a place for them to move in the food bank? Is, you know, what facilities that the park and rec department use? So we talked a little bit about that, maintaining both things that we would be able to keep the gyms and potentially, you know, could park and recs move to Hiller's Sleep, which has had that as, you know, a park and rec development there for the fields and that type of thing. So we did throw a lot of ideas, not all of it necessarily, you know, stuck. But I think the conversation that we had to support the different opportunities was really super helpful. If we are to maintain or to repurpose it, does not remove the operating expenses from the town. Obviously, you still have to cover those costs. And then we would look at some renovation upgrades that might be required. And we all are aware of the sightlines, report that one out, and the idea of the capital improvements that would need to be looked at. And so if the program is a school, obviously we would most likely be accountable for that cost. If that is repurposed as on the house, you might not have to pay that full capital improvement type of thing. Some of the different conversations that we had.
Yes, that's really important to realize. Because when you go with the site on this report, you see the dollars and it is, you're like, what? There's a lot of money there. But that is the worst case scenario to renovate every single thing, is my opinion. Renovate every single thing to make, update that building for bad use. You know, and by the way, we, we don't think any of, any of these are particularly great. These, these ones, it would be hard to figure out how to make, keep a building or in our budget and things like that. But just to have the suggestions is what we're trying to do. And, but there may be some of the things, you know, the full number in that site on your report to less than that, you know? So it's not zero. We know that a lot of money has to be spent on those buildings to do something. It's just a matter of what the use is and if we're going to keep it. But they, they, you know, everything is our daily available, so it would have to be, you know, whatever we touch is the biggest asset. But I just want to give you the most, not the full site on the report now, which is not necessarily what has to be done.
So then we look at keeping the property but renting it to others. So obviously it keeps the ownership to Portland and allows us for potential growth if we ever need to take that space back. We still own it. So say, you know, Oak Hill comes in and rents the whole school. In 10 years, they don't need it anymore. Or in five years, we're like, okay, well, our population just surged. We really need more classrooms for Portland students. We still have that property, so that does give us a little bit of growth, a little bit of comfort that we're not pitched for classrooms in our town. Question, does, does Portland want to be that works? Like, is that something that we would want to grasp? Do we want to maintain the idea of rental income, you know, in large percentage amounts like Hiller's Sleep? And some of the cons was does not remove operating expenses, as we just talked about. There's still some costs that we would have to be responsible for. Some renovations might still be required. And then, as I mentioned, the town becomes the landlord. Is that something that Portland could grasp? So then the last one was a combo in the blue is keep or demo part of it. And I agree to talk about this, maintaining portions of the building in regards to, we talked about losing all the gyms. Really the impact of that for the students in the town and the community. Is there a way that with Hiller's Sleep, and I don't have a floor plan to show you, but where the gym is, where the library is, there's a couple of classrooms. There's some locker rooms there. Is there a way that we could demo parts of the building that we don't need? Remove that cost from the capital improvement, maintain this percentage that we need and really make that kind of like the park. If they have the fields there, there's good parking there. Is it something that we could do in regards to that? But then they all HVAC, is that the part that we want to know? So there's some complexity to that. But obviously, these are just suggestions that we talked about throughout our process.
Yeah, and one of the developers was even, you know, wanted to partner with us. So there, there was some talk about a public-private partnership on both parties. But this one, and this particular developer was like, well, you, you guys use the gym as much as you want. You know, we'll, we'll come to an agreement on what, what that gym use is. Well, we need to renovate the space for whatever use they're going to renovate for. So, so nothing's cast and still we kind of have a rule book in, right? A rule book in the pound, so we can come up with approvals that developments need to follow that, that path to us. So if for some reason, you know, selling that to a developer, a part of that approval process could be allowing us to park and rent to use that gym. Three days a week for this, you know? And if it was just multifamily on Hiller's Sleep property, it could be, has to be, you know, these sized buildings cannot see this amount, this, this amount of residents, you know? So it's not ridiculously large building that, small piece of property. Or single-family homes, you know, could be a proper beach type thing. You kind of feel that when you walk up the drive down into the field. But as you know, proper beach is pretty dense too. So, you know, it pointed out is at an open line because we can write rules on what the development has to write by this.
And I just want to comment to note, if we are to demo, obviously the town would be responsible for covering the cost of that demo. But it would reduce the capital improvement costs and we'd have to, because it wouldn't have the most surplus and we'd have to maintain.
And so that was, did we address all that? So we talked about, okay, we'll demo the buildings and then the buildings aren't, these are grass. We still had to mow the grass, you know? We talked about still having to maintain the property, but there's no building there. So, so that was worth talking about if we wanted to keep that 16 acres of town property for some, you know, reason.
So Brian, Brian was saying, you can't build more land, right? We have opportunity of 16 acres that makes me sure a little bit, like, do we want this 16 acres of property that right now legal? So that came up with many conversations. Okay, we'll go to the next one. So now we switch to brownstone. So we did the same layout, so the opportunity to sell brownstone. Sell building to a developer and they can renovate it into condos, apartments, multifamily. So really a residential focus. The pros for that would be removing the operating costs from the town budget, brings in additional tax revenue to the town and a possible historic preservation element. We did have a couple of conversations, I think it was Chris Riley who said there are some grants and maybe some applications that the town could look at to see if there's any benefit for us to claim it as historic building for the town. There might be some funds that we can look into a little bit. Obviously, we haven't done that yet, but that's something, there's free money out there that we can get. I think that, you know, we should put in the effort to drive that down. The cons to that was the town loses the property ownership at Brownstone. And the sun property, obviously, we still need to maintain it until that sale is final. And in the private column, some of the committee notes, based on conversations with developing, this may be a viable option. A lot of them that we talked about seem that residential could really work well at Brownstone because of the location. With a spa that obviously came up numerous times. And I think part of our conversation was, have finished before, we do have time. So, you know, with the, with the Norristaw opening within a year or so. It's almost like coming back in a year and seeing how that impact has on Portland. And, you know, is there more of a need for residential, especially with Rayner opens? So the next one, number two, made to with ears, may benefit interest rates and increase value of property based on performance of new adjacent spa project. Three, for these factors to increase value of property. And then four, town can craft approvals that developer has to comply with. So things similar to what Ken was just saying. We know a lot of people have a draw to brownstone, yeah, brownstone, especially that facade. It is a prime implication on our main street. There is some building on the backside that might be a little bit more flexible to rearrange as we see fit. But I think putting in those regulations with the developers, not to destroy that facade.
I just want to insert a, a thought before we move on, y'all forget it. You're talking about possible historic preservation elements with that building. The two murals on the wall in the auditorium, I know are WPA murals. And I think there is a historic element to those. I don't know what they're painted on, if they're removable. But if, as you begin, if you begin around that historic road, that might be one of the aspects you could consider.
Okay, good, thank you for bringing that up. And then the next sell, sell building to developer to renovate into a boutique hotel. And at first, we threw that out there. We were, we were shocked by the concept and, you know, the idea that we're hearing more and more now with the idea of the Norristaw. They come into the day, wouldn't it be great for them to stay here? The weddings that might be happening at St. Clement's, is there anything that would draw families to come? You know, family weekend at Wesleyan, wouldn't it be great if there was a small hotel here? So the pros for that would be removing the operating costs from us, a possible entity now for Portland to offer. And then once again, the possible historic preservation element of it. You know, how cool would it be to sweep and classroom unit, one, two in space? There are a lot of problems. You already did that in my school. There are a lot of examples that we can obviously share, as I did some research across the nation that have literally done that. They've taken old schools and transformed them into beautiful hotels. And the cons to that would obviously we lose the property ownership. Some renovations we might still be required, might not. And the sun property might take time that we would still need to, to maintain. And the cons of that would be.
Uh, yeah, that's, you know, this was a tough one because as everybody knows, you know, people in Portland, me included in my household, have, you know, ties to this building. And the first thing I think my life building was, if you even think about who had buildings, you know? You know, but that's, that's general sense of, you know, presence, that the feel for that building, there's a, there's a connection to it. Whether it's historic really or not, there's, there is, is brownstone. It looks like Portland, you know, it kind of is Portland. And to lose it is, is something we definitely, you know, you're tired of. So, so, you know, this, this one here, you know, from the beginning, I was going to say this at the end, but the beginning, when we first met, it was like, how are we ever going to come up with anything to do with brownstone? But then he did, because nobody's going to change it. I mean, nobody, you know, that's was just my initial feel. But in the end, after, you know, these few months, man, we had a lot of good, exciting, positive ideas. And it doesn't, you can still see the brownstone facade in that front building. But maybe things happened on the sides and back, you know? Or other suggestions that came up that, you know, could happen. So it was really exciting to get to the end of this and have all the feedback we had come up with. And, and really, you know, to, to know we're actually coming to an end. That we can give you good, solid, positive feedback on suggestions versus when we first started this. And I don't think I was alone when we're all sitting, why did I join that?
It would be shared.
Yeah. But anyway, so it, it was a real positive experience and there's a lot of good, solid, positive opportunities there. And it's critical to know that in three years, you know, it's, it's finalized perfectly. See how this spot is going along. The property may get the chance as far as value in comparison to today. Interest rates can't really get much worse. So that's, that's the positive.
Nineteen seventy nine.
Yeah, right. But, um, so, you know, the time is on our side. Wouldn't, wouldn't it be great if in three years, interest rates come down? You know, construction costs are already starting to level, level out many areas. And the, the, the need and let's say the spa really kicks off and is amazing and incredible in Portland. And that spa is a destination place, that new structure is going to be built by, you know, in, in the real estate classes. So, so that, that, that we agree.
And just to side note to that one thing, you know, is the idea is, you know, there's a lot of draw to that building. But a lot of people just drive by, right? They don't have students in there anymore. I do, so I experienced the building, but say it becomes a hotel and now there's a cafe there that everybody in the public in Portland can go and experience. There's a rooftop restaurant or something like that that the public have access to. Like, what better experience really maintain that connection that Brownstone has? Because right now it's just a school, you don't have student in there, you don't really experience that building anymore. So that, you know, that's.
Yeah, and I've worked on a lot of, a lot of different types of commercial projects. Hotels are tough. It's tough to get the hotel people involved in, in this spot, right? As far as I can, you guys are hotel people, why don't you kind of, we all want to do that here. Do the swap, you know? So it's tough to get a hotel person. But then that, that sort of time may impact us really, really positively. And, and same thing goes for condos. You know, for me, condos, since when are condos, when does that make any sense? Well, Chris Riley, from my senior partners, is doing a condo project in West Hartford. And he enlightened us that they're selling for about $2 million a piece, you know, which is almost 1,800 square foot. So never did he ever think he'd be working on a condo project, you know, again, in Connecticut. But so that's, that's the number he never did. But not to say it's going to be condos, not to say it's going to be a hotel. You know, there's a lot of talk about why would you ever consider a hotel? But it just, I don't know. Because it really be that pretty cool connection between the Brenner Place, Norristaw, and a few years goes by and that will, you can see.
Okay, so moving on, if we're to keep that as a property, from, obviously keeping the property, still, you know, stuff that we would need to maintain, but what could it become as a lot of square footage there, we need to talk about just keeping that front bar, maybe demoing the classrooms in the back, or maybe that's where park and rec can move to, so we still have access to the auditorium so that they could look at return on investment and, you know, lease that out to some of the theater opportunities that we could have and maintain the gym there. Con would be, it doesn't remove the operating expenses that we would still need to undertake and some of the renovation upgrades that we would have to do potentially.
And basically have staff to manage that mechanical system, so wishes are made. So the good news is, okay, put in the mechanical system and, so you don't need staff to manage it, that's a good sense. It's a good way to keep the mechanical system at home. So, yeah, there's, there are not a lot of pros with keeping, keeping either property, but there are.
And then similar to what we did at Elga, literally was keeping the property but renting it to others. Obviously, the, 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 the similar, keeping ownership, while it's a maintained into our foreign inventory. We would have some income coming from the rentals, not removing the operating costs from our town budget would be a con and then obviously fix among the renovation upgrades would be on our bill to pay.
Or would, for example, you know, money was first, I heard it, over one, one, one face. So that, that's just an example of, you know, the opportunity that maybe could be used out there, could be a lot of space and a lot more.
And then lastly, in the yellow, we did talk about, as we mentioned, we were telling tonight was this idea of losing both of the gyms and really only having one, was the idea of, you know, constructing a pre-engineered building that would be able to accommodate gym space for the schools to, you know, to replace the gyms we potentially would be losing. It probably be helping support the needs of facilities for park and rec and the community, lowering the, the lower cost of construction could replace, you know, just leave the demoing, demo building replaces the fieldhouse and the space for park and rec usages. So obviously the cost, we would have to maintain the full cost of pre-engineered, engineered fieldhouse type building, but how does that compare to what we're, what we'll have to pay for capital improvements that we would need to maintain? We do keep all of those gyms.
We're a man of courage, they, they actually worked out perfectly, so they came up with this idea to build this fieldhouse to use for a track and then they used it as room space while they had all these, so they got this one. So they had many uses for this kind of, one kind of low expense cost of a new building. We don't, haven't really had all of that going on here, that makes, you know, that expensive of that, of that building. There were many uses, using it over many years, which were really lowers that one kind of cost. But it was, it was something that they did successfully, which we wanted to make sure you hit. And maybe that makes sense somewhere in some property that we have in Portland, not necessarily the new property or the old school property, but somewhere else or not, but we're talking about.
You know, so I think most of these talking points you've elaborated.
They have to be, they have to be, they have to be, is it cost?
Yeah.
So we kind of, we didn't have any estimates for any of this stuff, because that's not what we're charged, we're charged with the notice of suggestion. We didn't talk about, we were aware of costs, so we wanted you to know that, okay, we understand what the costs are to the town. We wanted to communicate that to you, that we understand it, we talked about it, but also for you to know that our task was not to come up with the costs exactly on what renovations are, what needs to be done, what the cost of the town would be. But just to know, we felt if we let that come along, then you wouldn't know that being considered a pain in the cost. So somewhat, the only other thing part is that, it's on those sheets, so you know we, we thought about it. The dollar sign, the question of our business is it, is it a cost? If we sell it, what's the cost to us? You know, the dollar, the four dollar signs versus two thousand signs, you know, we keep it, you know, there's a mutual cost to us, but then there would be if we sell it. So it's all that for us.
So the next one, I think we talked about both of these, so hopefully we're gonna completely, cost of maintaining those schools, which Ken talked about, the cost of having builders to acknowledge for the pros and cons, we talked about that, maintaining biz, sentimental connection to the town. This is what we haven't talked about yet, was what, what happens to these existing solar panel leases if the building is sold? So most of you are sure know that there's solar panels on the top of Gildersleeve, so, I mean, brownstone. So the idea of what does that become if we sell that building, because we still are leasing that, so how do we break that lease? Do we take those channels and move them to another property that Portland owns? We talked about that, neither person purchasing the property feels that that's a problem, they want to keep them, so we did talk about that.
Yeah, maybe put them, move them around to a back, I knew that's, that's constructive, that's negotiation that I have.
Um, you know, we, we talked a lot about, if we are subs of them, you know, we're losing out on those two properties. Is there going to be more of a need for apartments for senior living or single-family home? I think this is when times on our side, as we mentioned before, much rain and arid bins, and obviously a lot of that's going to be supplied there. Do they need more apartments, or is there going to be more of a focus for senior living, or are people gonna be looking more for single-family homes? We were all concerned with park and rec, we've mentioned numerous times, and then, you know, the idea of kind of field cost of company, what we need to, if we are comfortable with schools, that property is your main town home and our rent, what improvements would need to be made on our dollar that would be balanced out with the rent that we would be bringing in, so the return on investment, what would that look like? And then the town to look at possible grants and state funding opportunities, give it to the next slide. Um, what is the cost savings to a new school project if we can use biz in Gildersleeve as space space? So obviously we need to host a temporary classroom, we can utilize buildings that we currently have. If either school sold, depending on the updated functions, could the town rent specific facilities from the new gym, up from the new owner? As we talked about, Jim Jjinko was one of the developers who was really interested in Gildersleeve, and he made a pretty obvious step, he didn't want to lose that gym. So he had, you know, said there could be sections of us being able to rent that space back when we needed to use it. Times on our side, we'll read that one, because we talked about numerous times. During the process, we discussed with three professionals, two who are multifamily developers and the one that's more commercial real estate and the cost of building with demolition for either structure is about the same as the property's value, Ken briefly talked about that.
Talked about that, and Gildersleeve, the same case for brownstone. So, you know, what that means is, unless there is some type of development that is very dense or the property is so, is very valuable because it was given or whatever. There, there's no, you know, hate to use the term net zero, but there's, it's not really worth anything right now. The buildings, the model I should order, or the energy, costs as much as the property would or more. Yeah, that, that was a slide.
And then.
Yeah, I told that commercial, a colleague, a commercial real estate broker, and I was talking to him about it, he happened to be working on a project in West Hartford. And the first thing he says is, I didn't, I didn't even say anything, the first thing I just thought of was, you know, the chances that they're, they're being worked more than much of properties were in this one. Like, I didn't even say anything yet, and, and he's already done what I forgot what I said. It wasn't, you know, so.
Um, and then the last one we already talked about was, you know, putting on any sale of either of the properties and really making sure that we put in any restrictions that we think are relevant to hold on to thus, like, the facade of brownstone and maintain that for any future sale, that we have some flexibility of what we can put in there. And I think.
That's about it.
The next slide is just, I think.
Brownstone is great, visitors, you know, to the parks and the bridge, rooftop, up there, you know, it's just, it's a really cool property. Chris from Weising team was, you know, he was excited. And Larry from Pol was excited about Pol properties, because when he walked out into the field of Gildersleeve, he could see, oh, this is really something nice. So to see those two guys at different times, you know, be, be excited about the possibilities was uplifting for me, because I really didn't love it. And then to seal the deal at the end, the last meeting, the gentleman we had, that was more interesting, Gildersleeve really sealed the deal for me, that here's some really good possibility to do. So anyway, the final report will have specific suggestions and, you know, pretty much, it's just gonna be, uh, maybe a little bit less worried, but that's still something. So, what's that thought, guys?
Thank you.
Thank you both.
May they have any questions for Kristen or Ken while they're here?
Or maybe I don't have a spot anymore, but since you're here.
I just, I just want to thank Kristen and Ken about presentation. Kristen, for our last meeting, and Ken helped to direct us away. And I'm looking at my notes from our previous meetings, and like, you didn't follow. But thank you guys.
I think, I mean, I want to compliment this board for your appointments, because clearly we have the right people on the committee, thank you. All right, some work up, the work is just getting started. All right, next up on your new business, we have item B, which is a first election informational summary. And John, let's you take your way to here.
I don't want to keep us too long, so, yeah, I don't want to keep it there, but two, there you go. Two, there's two more. One extra, make notes. But I'll do this, I'll just, I'll read through my proposed motion first, I think the best way to do it, I'll just read through it, make the motion, have somebody second it, and we can talk to it. I, this is just something I, I put, as I said at the last meeting, I really think it's important that we educate the voters and they go into, into November, understanding the issue to greatest extent possible. I really could, I said, I can't speak to what the school leads does mean, I don't feel, I'm, I'm not an educated teacher, but I know that we have access to this information, so I think that it's important to be put out. So what I'd like to do is propose the motion, give a second, and then open it up to anybody with any ideas, any amendments, whatever we want to do, and see if it flies, is that what I do, and I'll just read it into the record, so we have it. Will you read the motion first?
He's gonna move it.
Yeah, I'm gonna move it. Okay, here's the proposed motion. In anticipation of the November twenty twenty-four school building utilization referendum and for the purpose of providing Portland residents with a better understanding of known and anticipated future municipal expenses prior to the referendum, the first selectment shall facilitate development of informational financial summary document that includes but is not limited to the following. Total net combined budget mill rate for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, our current budget, just as a baseline, so we have a talking point. Proposed total school building project cost, gross and that anticipated. Options for future action on closed building, closed school buildings are related to fiscal impact, I put that in there and now tonight we got some information, we could provide that. Secondary school costs for repairs and enhancements, known and anticipated. And again, this is all high level. Bonding, anticipated new bonding costs versus adjustment for fully satisfied bonds, and that could be the bonds associated with, that we anticipate for the proposed new school. General government and board of education employee contractual costs. I know we have, we've got, the general government, we agreed on, I guess they're working on education, but that's why I said known and anticipated. Portland water source project costs, water sewer maintenance enhancement costs, known and anticipated. Portland infrastructure costs, known and anticipated. Portland capital improvement costs, known and anticipated. And then just to be clear, I'm trying to get the full picture here, I have estimated future annual tax revenues, known and anticipated. And then I conclude, I conclude the motion with the final summary document shall be presented to the board of selectmen at the regular meeting on August seventh, twenty twenty-four for review, discussion, and development of plan for dissemination for investors. So I'll make that motion.
So I just want to, I think it's, I think it's great, my only, my only concern is not the information that you're requesting, just some of it is, is somewhat ambiguous, I guess you could say. I mean, when you look at our annual budget and you look at what the capital needs are in the town, I mean, every year we have thirty-plus million dollars in capital in, in a five-year plan that's not funded, but that doesn't mean that we don't.
Well, I guess what I was looking for, what I was looking for is, you know, I don't want to give you more work, but if you were to reach out to, to Ron, and if you go out there and just say, okay, you know, based upon our last budget proposed and what you have on the capital items, if you had to give me three items that you feel are critical or the most important, that we need to plan for in the next three to five years? And it just, you know, even a rough estimate, it could be, I guess you could flag an asterisk, that it's, these are just rough.
Okay, I just don't want to be held to it, you know.
No, I just, but my fear is, I know this is most harmful, but my fear has always been that folks may go in in November to the, to vote on this and not even know that we're working on a water source or all this other stuff that's going on. I just want to, I want to have that information available.
The water source, though, will likely be tied to water users and not the town as a whole. So each, each one of these items, I think we can, we can break down some of them, but there's, there's different ways to. The general government and board of education employee contractual costs, that's, that's difficult to put into, like, a document, I guess. That, that's my only concern, it's not, it's not the, I mean, you'd have to go through each contract.
And I'm not looking for this to be some thesis. I'm, I'm just saying, like, for the contracts, you could say that, that the, the Tom employee contracts will renegotiate at such and such a date and X percent are anticipated for, for the X, you know.
Are we in discussion?
Well, let's, we, we got, we got a motion, you second it, right?
Yeah, so this is.
So I know we talked the most, a great deal in the different meetings about not being transparent. And one of the things we were, it kicked off this conversation, I feel like these schools are in, we're in. And we'll get through this list, I'm, I agree with you on a lot of it, but I think what we need to do is to have, like, anticipated repairs of the, the school buildings, anticipated repairs of the water structure, the sewer structure, infrastructure costs. Almost as a bullet point thing and not really getting into that.
That's all I'm looking for, yeah.
And, you know, like, the, the board of education employee contract, I mean, this is stuff that we negotiate every year or every three years or whatever the contracts are, that I just would like, and this is my personal opinion, the things that are gonna come up, that aren't coming up on a yearly budget basis.
All I was trying to do is, you know, if there, if a statement could be made with, like, contractual, employee contractual budget, a statement could be made that generally, every, every yearly budget is approximately X percent for salaries. I mean, I, I just want the average person to have a, a better understanding of what we do. Like, I said many times, I'd love the average person to sit on this board, to sit on the board of education during budget time, to really see how many, how many pennies are hinged and, and how we, how we go about it. And, you know, these are just the, the high level, I really want a high level thing, just so they understand where the big ticket costs occur every year.
Right, now, what, what, once this document, however it comes out, how are the people gonna see this? how are the people gonna see this and how are they gonna look at it differently than when we're in budget session? And he's on Facebook or on his, you know, his, his weekly podcast or anything telling people we're in budget, come down to public hearing or the, the budget deliberations. And we get no one except the same people. I just want somehow, and that's why my biggest thing was when we were talking about schools, when we were talking about these schools, what they need is why I was so adamant about we could, that question, we're not even questioning a statement. I'm the bad with that said that. Now, I agree with each other, and all of us. The only thing I don't, I hate to see happen is we go through this and.
No one does it.
No one, no one reads it.
But I think we're better off making it available and having a good baseline for this.
That's about it.
Because I think that's one of the, one of the things something this document will do. If having this, it's a good baseline when people are asking us for information. We're gonna get consistent information about where it is. There'll be one document that'll give sort of a general sense of some of the financial impacts, some of the financial, there's a sort of financial impacts to the town, both positive and negative. For example, the future tax revenues, talking about some of the known and anticipated projects. Or we've got some things here we're talking about costs. And I think it's important for, for taxpayers to know those costs that come out. And also it can be equally important to know for folks, for example, on water and sewer, you know, they ask, well, are you gonna study somebody to do well? But that's also anticipated to create X amount of vehicles savings, right? Operational savings that's gonna allow us, that's gonna help from, for. I think it's important for folks to know that on the tax base, there's already some anticipated growth in the tax base, both from radar and from the spot, right? Things like that, put it in one place, it's easy for them to see. And when we all get questions, as we will over the next several months, we're talking from a sort of a backdoor document. So if we get people putting in system information.
That I agree with. I just wanna see how we can get this, like. My budget binder is in my trunk all the time.
Actually, you have a new budget binder. You all did it at town hall, so pick it up.
So anyhow, because people will come up and ask me, where's all my money going? And before I say, well, you could have been at the meetings I had to sit through, I would just say, if you want, bruises. So, I mean, and I would keep the document with me, but I I just would like to see and make sure if he's, if, if this board, Ryan, whoever's gonna compile this, that we get it. So it's advertised enough, when we go on the homepage of the, the, people go on the homepage of the website, town website, that's the person that, if we can, I don't know.
Okay, so can I just interject a, my only, my only request, John, with your motion is that we change the date? Cause I think August 7th.
That was just, that was against them.
But I, I, like, maybe by their first meeting September would be that way, still much prior to the other.
I thought actually that would, is a dual purpose to the date I put there. I, I think it, it's better for us to get the information out closer to the election when people are gonna read it and retain it. But I also wanna make sure that we get it up early enough so we potentially put the baseline for the discussion out there before misinformation starts applying.
I, I do wanna add that I think that this, as important as it is, is a, is a supplement to the primary, our primary goal. What, what I'm focused on is what I see are going to be a lot of questions from the taxpayers in town on how will the referendum vote that you're going to the polls affect my mill rate, affect my taxes? I see that as the, the primary, how, what, what are we voting on and how will it affect me? And then supplementary to that is, hey, here are the other things that we have going on in town that may or may not down the road impact also, like the secondary schools and like water. So you know what I mean? So I think we have to do both.
I agree. Yeah. That's what we did in 2016, when we were looking at, for example, the recreational complex. There was a document that was put together that showed what was coming off bonding, what would go on to bonding. And.
That's exactly, that document is exactly what I'm.
Yeah, that's what I was. This was only an attempt on my part to try and get, to post the conversation to get it started. You know, cause I know that there are, I want folks to look at the big picture and make a, make an informed decision so they understand that, you know, there are other things that there need, need to be get done at the same time.
And I, and I, I think it's great. I think we should definitely do this and, and I, it, it's tough because I know Sean said it. I mean, as much as we try to get the public informed, sometimes it is, it is a job that's a little difficult.
But I look at, you, you mentioned, I think, the term transparency, you know? And I, I look at this, if nothing else, if we put this document together and we do our best to make it available to the public on the website, and maybe when you send out your glass periodically, Ryan, and you could, you know, put a little code or something or they could link to it. But I think that would show our, our desire to ensure the transparency that everybody's properly educated.
I agree. So.
So I, I don't know.
Can you just amend the date?
When is the September what?
Uh, first meeting is September.
Yeah, which would be September, let me just pull it up. Uh, seventh, oh wait, no, fourth, fourth.
Fourth.
Yeah, September 4th.
And do you wanna put another, or I mean, I have no problem with you reworking this and figuring out how you wanna put the other statements you mentioned in there about the mill rating thing, so.
About, well, I think that that's gonna be a separate document. I think there's gems of like that bonding, how will the bond impact the taxpayers? I think that's, that's gonna be its own document because that's part of the referendum. Is that creating that, which is just that. And this is, the only thing that I'm a little concerned about this is just that we don't, and I think you touched on it, John, with the big stuff and the stuff that we know about, but there's, it's not gonna be, we had a, we had a fire engine, number three, go down. And now there, there's no way they would account for those types of things.
And it's within the army, it's a big problem.
Exactly, no, no, I just.
Well, we'll do as good as we can get.
I thought about putting that on.
But we can already account that and that's about it.
And, and I just wanna, I did pull up.
Well, we're all in our buying.
So, so I pulled up, just so, I pulled up our capital improvement plan from this year's approved budget, okay? And so this year, across all departments, across water, sewer, everything, the town funded 1.2 million dollars in capital improvements. We also identified in the next fiscal year alone, we have identified 31 million dollars in capital needs next year. That's the next year. The, the year after that is thirty, but they're not always, some of them aren't.
That's what I'm saying, that's my anticipation. I'm trying to figure out how we pull out, weed out all the flush from, from the real things that we need to do.
But just so you know, our five-year, our five-year capital improvement plan is 120,838,187 dollars.
And that's legit, man, that. And if you look at some of the stuff that I know that's on there, it's like you're looking at almost a million, almost a million dollars in revenues.
Yeah, but a lot of the time we should push, we push things because we know we can't push that out in the back.
And what you might do for the, the capital improvement moment is just a fortified line statement that, you know, generally we always maintain a, a capital improvement list of X dollars. In 2024, 25, we approved X dollars. And, you know, of higher important items for the following budget year, we looking at a potential amount of X dollars. Just so they understand with an example, these are examples of what some of those, you know?
So, a couple of things though. So the purpose of this is focused on the question in November, right? These are all things that are kind of circling around that.
Yes.
And I think we have to be careful in, I don't wanna say overcomplicate it because more information is good because there's a lot of things, we're spending more money than any project we've done since our year four renovation, right? Twenty seven, the million dollars, my bad. Um, so I think that's gotta be driving it. Also, a final summary by November or by September 4th. Some of it could be evolving, we're gonna be getting additional information as we go through. So I don't know if final summary is the way I would describe it because, you know, as best we can, as best we can, relevant information and then it may evolve over.
If you have a disclaimer.
Right, of course. But there'll be a lot of stuff, and we just have to, I think we have to provide the best information on the project and those things that are big enough topics to affect someone's property that's, you know, the mill rates. Those will be relevant in there as well, but I think we just have to be careful. But no, I think it's a great idea. Uh, but again, the purpose is that question is a big, it's the biggest question we've asked for.
Yeah, and I, I had people ask me, you know, about the cost. And people, this is what is triggering in my mind for, for a couple of months now. Cause I, I was asked on Board of the Wonders, what other big expenses do we have? And if this is gonna be a, a, a big bond for a longer time, what other expenses do we have? That's all I'm trying to do is give people a picture of our financial condition.
Snap shot.
Snap shot. With our understanding that it could change at any time.
And one of the things that this is the only thing.
I think, and, and so, got it.
One of the things that you said, John, you just said to them, this is, this, we're pushing this up thirty years. That's a long, long time, I mean, for.
And, and I purposely wrote this as such a way I tried to be neutral and look at it from all perspectives, both costs and revenue. Just, just so that people feel like they're being given information with no special.
Not so big of a scale, wow. I, I think the other, I'm sorry, Sean, one more question. I think the other thing too is we have an opportunity to, I think, educate a lot of town residents on the budget process that we go through. And we deliberate and look at every single line and echo what you said. Uh, this gives an opportunity to show that we're watching every single dollar as we're doing this, we're taking it very seriously. Uh, we understand the gravity and the amount that's involved in this. And I think people are paying attention. I mean, people by the meetings that, uh, your residents are coming to, the questions we're getting asked, people are obviously paying attention to this more than anything. So, so that means that we have to make sure that we're actually careful with this to keep a balance and to distill down, um, the information that they need to know. And then if they wanna know more, they can chase it down. Right, I think, but yeah, so that is an important thing, very important thing to do.
So, so with the motion on the floor, it's seconded. Um, I made the amendment to change the deliverable date to September 4th, 2024. And all I would say as just commentary is that maybe we can just carry a discussion of this to our next couple of meetings, just in case you can come back with any questions or anything that you got in the process we could work with.
Yeah, I guess if I have any questions, I don't think I need it on an agenda. I don't, you know, but if we, if I do have any questions, I would reach out to the board. I would just put it under general discussion.
Perfect.
And honestly, I think I have enough to, to work with here as far as, you know, what, I, I know exactly what you're looking for, I guess I should say, but.
It's hard to put it down on paper in words. All, this is just an effort to trying to identify some stuff to give people a whole picture.
Yeah.
Um, and you, you and, and Tom, anybody else can figure out whatever you wanna put in, how you wanna do it.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I, I think, but I just wanna reiterate, like, the primary concern is informing the public on the school. I mean, because everything else is, 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 we don't really know how we're gonna tackle the secondary schools yet. We know we have, we know that there's work to do, but where there's grants available, we know that we can apply for the H VAC grants for extension. And that's how we're gonna potentially do the H VAC. But so, so I've come up with some high level stuff to, to kind of guide where, where the town.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. And also, I should add, we are also starting our new plan of conservation and development, which is going to have a lot of these ticket items. It's not gonna be ready in time for the referendum, but I think some of what is in this report is gonna carry over. So that's a ten-year plan for the town, where we're gonna head and all that. So that's coming up in 2026. So, alright, so motion made, seconded. Any further discussion on this?
No.
So I'll call for a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes on the extension motion carried to that? Really, thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you guys for listening.
Alright, so we will move on to the status and committee reports. Did I talk, I can't remember if I informed you guys on the bar grant? Did we, that we, the town received, did we talk about that?
Yeah.
Perfect. Alright, so then I don't have too much to report. I, I do wanna thank Bob Shea and Amy Nino. Um, we do have two pickleball courts that made an announcement yesterday about that. That's been, I, it's kind of crazy how popular pickleball is. Bob did text me, he told me that the courts, I think I announced it, and there was, there was people playing ten minutes later. So pickleball was very popular. So we have the courts and we were able to do it very, it was a lot of savings economically by using tape instead of having to pay somebody to paint the lines. And I guess they make pickleball tape, it's not very expensive and people use. Uh, so thank you to Bob Shea. I'll be in our grounds group for doing that. Uh, they do that early morning the other day. And I think, oh, you know what? I do have another announcement I went. Uh, we had an Economic Development Commission meeting yesterday where we walked Main Street. We toured Main Street and we voted for all of the businesses that participated in the storefront improvement project with the flowers and. I, I just wanna, once I know all the businesses on Main Street who participated, they really, really look great. We, we had our EDC meeting at the ale house. No ale was consumed, but we, but we did, we did meet there and it was, it was a good, a good time. Uh, and then what else was I gonna say? Oh, I talked to this board about Burdon, you may remember? I, I thought we were gonna have a trip today. They told me that they were ready for the whole board, so they just invited me today. So I'm sorry, I, I went to Burdon today. But they just emailed me with four dates for July. They want the whole board to come and I'm gonna try to get some department heads too. Uh, so I will, I haven't even sent the email yet, but I, I know it's there. So I'll be sending those dates out in July, so if the board wants to, uh, let me know what dates were for you, we'll, we'll do that.
This is boat ride too?
This is a boat ride too, yeah. It was pretty cool, we were in the.
Oh, you got a boat ride today too?
I did. I got to drive a boat, John.
And to see that there's a fight with the captain.
But anyway, so they're, they're really, they're doing some great stuff. They, they have some stuff they wanna talk to us about and show us what they're doing and all that. So that will be a special meeting in the Board of Selectment in July sometime. Uh, and that is all I have for me.
Um, I quickly enter last meeting. I think you may recall I had an update from the Board of Education meeting that passed on because we were really busy. So I, I'll just go through it real quick, this was from the May 21st meeting, because there's a lot of, a lot of good information. The Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent Recognition Award went to Ava Maslik and Abigail Kivini of Portland High School. And Dr. Britton presented those to the girls. We had a promotional video of PHS as a capstone project that Paige Fitzgibbons did present it. Um, Mr. Bernard and Mrs. Novak, uh, who worked with the capstone, stone project were there. And I was very impressed. I remember when I was in high school, here, one was done like that and it was just photographs, it wasn't a video. But it really sold the school well.
That's great video.
Yeah, it's very good video. Student representative report, they said the music department performed. This is all late stuff now, but they performed at the Argos game. The Shoreline Track and Field Championship was hosted here. The golf team, once again, won the Shoreline Championship. And, and they said that the student senate was placing flags for Memorial Day. I guess it's the cemeteries. Uh, communications update, Dr. Britton talked about some folks that are leaving, some paraprofessionals and social worker, uh, leaving school and the vacant, Valley View principal, uh, they're filling the Valley View principal vacancy for next year. They discussed the pre-date for five education specification plan. And Meg, is the person sitting in the front row? Meg moved to accept it, uh, as it was presented, it was seconded and it was approved, motion carried. motion carried. Uh, committee reports were provided, um, I won't go into the fine detail there, and then they went to executive session, but I just thought there was some, some good information there that, uh, our kids at the schools we should probably.
And we had graduation.
Had graduation. And I, I tell you, I was impressed with, with the kids, I thought, I felt they were all very well, presented, they presented themselves well, I think the speeches were great.
And, and Phil Lashain, who's not here this evening, was a salutator.
Yeah.
And I'd like to think we all had something to do with that.
Hundred, hundred percent.
So, yeah, you can really, I'm not, you just.
And he gave a great speech too.
He did a very good job, yes, he did.
So that's, that's all I got.
All right. Any other stats in committee reports?
I'm, I'm actually, I just, um, had nothing to add, but Ryan threw forth from water and, you know, boy, that was.
Yeah, and we're waiting on, uh, more details from EZI, I just, uh, Ryan cleared an administrative meeting today, and Ryan, uh, was talking about that to our department heads as well. All right, there's no more stats in committee reports, we'll move to public comments, is there anyone in the audience?
Sure.
Come on up. Sure.
So thanks Scott, bye for your way. Uh, I just wanna say thank you to the Board of Selectmen for, um, appointing some really growing people to the facility study building, um, land use committee, whatever, the title, official title is, um, they have a vision and, you know, we really are talking about a vision for the town of Portland. Um, we know that schools, um, are important to the community, for the future of our community, those, those kids that we are educating today are the future Board of Select people and Board of Ed people tomorrow, with their future teachers and, and, and blue collar workers and, and all, all of the above. Um, so I can't stress the importance enough of, um, the town supporting, um, the schools and the public, um, the public education process. And I know that we do support public education when the whole town shows up for graduation for eighty-seven seniors graduating. Um, I really want to stress that, um, we, we have, we have a vision and, and hopefully, um, we'll be able to, with the partnership with the Board of Selectmen, to be able to give, um, accurate figures for the town's people to understand the cost, and certainly this is not the only project that needs to be, um, mentioned in, in the process of, of building this town into a sustainable town. Um, we, this little corner of the world is okay, and I, I thank all of you for your service and for, for what we do, and, um, we'll work at the Board of Ed to make sure that we have our accuracy for, um, what it's gonna cost and the savings that we'll be able to appreciate and perhaps use it for some of these other projects that are so important to the town. So thank you again, and, you know, I said recently to somebody, if we didn't have visionaries, we wouldn't have the bridge, the railroad wouldn't have come through Portland, and we'd still be rowing the boat across the river to Oakdale Town, so, you know, visionaries and, and thinking about the future is, is very important, and, uh, and I hope that that's what we're all thinking about, so thank you, and good meeting today.
Any other public comment? Anyone online? Uh, then we'll move on to Board of Select and general formal discussion, they don't have anything this evening. Bobby, you have been very quiet.
Um, for the, for the good of the order, um, Portland Summer Contest Series, which is anywhere to start last three Tuesdays and, um, July and the first Tuesday, so in the rainy days long, so should be, should be eligible this season, hopefully, we're gonna avoid some of the storms that we had a few of that year.
Looking forward to it, thank you, Jim. All right, uh, there's no more general formal discussion, they don't have anything on the followed items, uh, but I do wanna say, I think we'll be able to get to the next fire truck most likely in July, so, you know, we've been talking about kicking it out for a while. Um, uh, yes, I, I will update on Jokes Pond, just so, uh, we did enter into those contract agreements last week, we're working on getting the access agreement still with the property orders, uh, it'll be with EverSource on Monday, uh, working with the YNCA on their access agreement and their property order as well, so we're hoping, we're hopeful we'll have pumps in, I, I'd like to say in two weeks, but, you know, we're working on it, so, so you're, you're gonna stay on that. All right, well, if there's nothing else, I'll.
Make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? How we gonna handle it?
All right, here's your one.